We are so glad that you're with us tonight. We want to, we want to go ahead and get started, call the meeting to order, but thank you for being here. We're going to call on Pastor Johnny Osagara from Victory Baptist Church to do our invocation.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's pray. Father God, we come to you tonight and we just thank you for your many blessings, Father. We thank you for the love you show us and the mercy and grace you show us, God. Father, I thank you for the Board of Commissioners before us, Father. We thank you for their leadership and direction and we just pray that you'd give them wisdom and discernment as they help and lead our county and for the different aspects that they are a part in, Father. Father, I do also just pray for the men and women in this room. As we start a new week, we pray that you'd give us a good week, Father, keep us all safe. Lord, help us with just the different areas of life that we are involved in and I pray, Father, that we would lead well. Father, we do want to lift up our county to you, Father. We pray for Davie County, all of the cities and towns that are a part of it, Father, and even thinking of our state and country as a whole, we pray for them as well, Father. We just pray, Father, though, that you'd be with our county. We pray that you would help us to just make the best choices that we possibly can, that we would serve our county well and that we would just grow as a county and that things would prosper. Father, we do thank you, though, for the many ways you bless us. And so, Father, again, we pray for wisdom and discernment. We pray for those that are above us in leadership positions and even in the government as we think of those and we lift them up to you, Father. But, Lord, we just pray, and my prayer is, is that we would just glorify and honor you through what we say, what we do, what we think, and even how we act, Father. May we just bring praise and glory to your name. We thank you for being a loving Father and helping us with the many aspects that we face in life and we just pray that in everything we do that would bring you glory. And so, Lord, again, we thank you for the many blessings that you pour into our lives. We thank you for the gospel, most of all, Father, and to know that we can have a personal relationship with you, God, because of the death, burial, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. And so, Lord, help us just to always remember those truths and to live by the truths that we see from Scripture, Father, and give you praise, honor, and glory. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Give thanks. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Now, Brian Jacobs is going to lead us into the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Ethics and conflict disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December of 2019, I ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before you as a board to vote on this evening. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda's adopted. Seeing no one speak up, Mr. Chair, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion. Mr. Renninger, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, any other discussion? All in favor? All right. And now, public comment.
Mr. Chair, we have one individual who has signed up, Todd Naylor, signed up on Spillman Road subdivision. And, Mr. Naylor, if you would come forward, if you would state your name for the, into the microphone so that it can be picked up over here and you know the three-minute rule.
Yeah, I'm speaking for a group, Mr. Vogler. Does that give you five minutes?
Five minutes, yeah.
On behalf of the Fire Department. Most of you, I mean, I've spoken to you before about budget issues, but that's not my thing tonight. We kicked that can down the road a little further. The topic tonight, and I wrote this down so I'd try to stay on task, is the first major subdivision under the new subdivision zoning rules that were approved in April. I wasn't able to attend that public hearing due to a death in my family, but at any rate, it happens to be located in my fire district and it is more directly off Spillman Road in the 700 block. This is a location is zoned RA. It's completely surrounded by RA zoning in the rural area here. There's no public water or sewer that's available for this tract of land. And as you know, under the section 155, 140 of the subdivision zoning ordinance, the clear intent of RA zoning district is to have a single-family housing dwellings intermingled with agricultural uses, separated from one another by open fields or wooded areas. This section specifically says the intent is clearly to exclude commercial and industrial uses or residential subdivisions that require public services as such as water and sewer that's not already in the area. So, this subdivision that's proposed here is basically the opposite of the intent of the RA zoning districts. This is a Class III subdivision with 40 lots, all of which require individual sewer systems and individual water wells. Since there's no public water requirement, that means there's no fire hydrants to provide water supply for fire suppression. And the closest hydrant to this location from the development over to the water plant is almost a mile away. So, when the changes were approved to update the subdivision requirements, the lot sizes did increase from 30,000 square foot up to 40,000. But, one of the things that I noticed when I went back to listen to the meeting online, there was not anything mentioned about the minimum width requirements being dropped from 100 foot down to 80 foot. So, the size, the total size of the lot got bigger, but the width requirements got smaller. So, in this particular development, it allows for the majority of the homes coming in there to be at the building lines 30 foot apart. That's not even the length of this room if you measure that. So, this raises, actually raises the needed fire flow required by ISO by 250 gallons a minute by those houses being closer together just based on the spacing. That's the concern, obviously, for me as a fire chief. So, what happens is if we have a structure fire out there, the fire most likely will spread to adjoining structures on both sides and who knows how much further till we can, can get there and with no water in the area, then we've got a truck watering. And so, that becomes an issue. I know this development meets the minimum requirements set forth in this ordinance, but it puts homeowners and firefighters at risk by not planning for fire suppression, water supply. It meets the current fire code, as I understand from the Fire Marshal's Office, but most likely it'll not meet the 2025 code when that's published just because of the closeness of the houses and only one entrance coming in and that kind of thing. I know it meets the DOT minimum road requirements, but it's not conducive for tank or shuttle operations when that has to happen. So, in my opinion and the opinion of my colleagues at the Fire Department, this type of high-density development should not be allowed in RA-zoned districts that do not provide for public water supply. This property would be a great place for larger lots, say, five acres or more, where houses could be divided or separated by open land or wooded area. And I really believe further inputs needed for consideration of emergency services and fire protection in order for this to be a safer living environment for the consumers that buy these homes and for the firefighters and first responders that are protecting them. My request to you as a Board of Commissioners, number one is if you could require the local fire chiefs in the district to be a part of the TRC for input on these types of subdivisions, number one, and change the lot width immediately back to the 100-foot width requirement rather than 80 so that they won't be so tightly squeezed together. And the third thing is I would encourage you not to approve these high-density developments in areas that don't have any public water supply. I know when the developers, you know, develop these properties, they're in it to make a living and make money and if they add those water lines in to their cost, it raises the, the cost of the properties they're selling. But still, is that five minutes or three? I'm sorry. So, I'll hush and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any for me or after the meeting. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief. No, you're, you're good. Thank you, thank you. This, we got the, an email from Chief end of last week. I mean, this, to me, is extremely serious and I know we're not supposed to respond to public comment, but I, is Mr. Easter here? Could you come up?
And, and I'm not, I'm not bringing you up here to grill you. I'm bringing you up here to ask you a question. A couple of things. One is the things that Todd has brought forward here, especially the, those, those minimum widths.
Right.
Not a problem changing the ordinance.
If you see fit to change the ordinance, we can change the ordinance.
Okay. Secondly, the require, creating a requirement, I think we can do this internally, that those fire chiefs be involved in the technical review.
The, the Fire Marshal is there during the technical review and some of these issues were all discussed during that. So, during the technical review with the developer, the Fire Marshal is, is represented at every TRC associated with that.
In the rural, in, in, everything our ordinance deals with is rural.
Right.
Could, could we add the fire chiefs or representative from that Fire Department?
If you see fit, we absolutely can.
Now, here's my, here's my question. In a situation like that one on Spillman Road that Todd, that, that Chief Naylor has brought up here, can we, is it, and I know this may not be necessarily practical, but everything that we're dealing with is, is in the rural part of the county.
Ninety-eight percent of Davie County, the unincorporated area, is either RA or R20. So, we're talking about 98% of the non-incorporated area of the county. And, and I may be way off here and, Mr. Vogler, you may tell me this is absolutely not possible. But within the context of the ordinance, in the, in the situation that Chief Naylor is talking about, can we build into the ordinance a requirement that the developer supply or fund the fire suppression for, for a development like this? I mean, he's bringing up valid points. So, so, I guess, what, mandatory? So, when we deal with the development with this, we sit down and deal with county utilities, Fire Marshal's Office, DOT, and all the representatives are there. So, it's discussed, you know, when, when we deal with this, the approval of the major septic tank system, water is not incorporated in it. Water is in no aspect associated with it, okay? So, to, to approve it, they can either put wells, they can either hook to Davie County Community Water, public water, or drill a community well. So, they just have to supply water, okay? If they have to have wells, then they have to meet the necessary separation distances for well. It's up to the developer themselves. But that's going to be a question if we require mandatory hookups for public water or community water supplies. I mean, if, that would be for all subdivisions, minor subdivisions, subdivisions as a whole. You know, that's something that this board would have to address and have to get with, with, with utilities to make sure that's, that's doable. Because we don't have access, not all of Davie County does have public water.
Yeah. I, I just think it's something we need to discuss because I think Chief Naylor brings up a valid point about this specific development here, even outside of the minimum widths, those kind of things. But, uh, we need to talk about, we need to talk about that because we don't want to have a situation where we're creating a safety issue. And I think if we had gotten this on the front end, we may have been able to have this discussion earlier on.
Well, like I said, in all subdivisions approval, in Davie County, water is not incorporated in it. Public water access is not incorporated in it. So, they can decide, up to them. We do subdivisions to where the minimum lot size, it's not cost-effective for the developer to run water. Utilities is represented there to see if we can even get water. Water's right there. It's just not cost-effective to get water. We had those discussions with the developer and a lot of times the developers will say, hey, look, I can't sell lots. I don't want to do wells. I want to explore a community well. I want to explore other stuff. Or I'm going to do individual wells on the lot. This developer chose to do individual wells on the lot. So, was, was aware of that. The Fire Marshal was in there and voiced some concerns with the developer and those are developers. We passed on through the homeowners to, you know, increase the insurance rates and various stuff like that. But, but those discussions are had with the developers. This was brought up with the developers. They can choose to hook to water or not hook to water. We don't have mandatory requirements for hookups and then they proceeded on to be able to, to make sure we got with environmental health, to make sure all the setbacks, they could get wells located on every lot.
But we could explore, and this is where I think we have to, we have to have discussion about this. We could explore in, in certain situations where we maybe create the safety issue that we talk about mandatory hookups.
If, if this board sees fit, absolutely. That's the discussion, you know, mandatory hookups, you know, with a location. You know, this subdivision, if they could have had water, they would have water. I don't, I don't think it's, you know, the developers not wanting to do that. It's kind of hard to sell no one having to go in to put a well in it. Public water is, is by far preferred for most of the developers, but if, if they don't have access of it, we cannot. It's not a part of the subdivision approval process. It's not.
Well, we need to think about that.
Sure. Yes, no problem.
Because that is a huge safety issue for the citizens and for the emergency service personnel. And I guess if a developer is going to ignore the concerns of our Fire Marshal and our Fire Chiefs, then we do need to put in requirements for them because that's, I mean, that's what I'm reading between the lines. You're saying that concerns were expressed.
Right.
Evidently, they weren't, they weren't acknowledged, so I guess then our.
Well, I, I can't speak for the developers if they acknowledge them or not. I mean, but, but, but some of those issues were addressed.
Well, initially, we need to work on the minimum width, you know, if that, that's a concern to our, our fire folks. And then we can have a discussion over this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But involve them in the TRC, okay? And Cameron may do that.
Yeah.
But I think, I think there, obviously, there's some desire to be involved. And the more folks we can have involved, the better. Brent?
The, clarify the part about, first question about the 100 reduced to 80, was that?
So, in the subdivision ordinance, it was different, right? So, we had, we changed it in a couple of ways. When we adopted the minimum lot size of 40,000 square foot with water, it's just across the board, 80-foot wide. So, in the old subdivision ordinance, if you had public water, it was 80-foot wide and 30,000 square foot. So, the new subdivision ordinance just addresses it, it's 150-foot wide if you access a public road, okay? If you establish a new road, it's 80-foot wide, 40,000 square foot minimum regardless if you have public water or don't have public water. Those are minimums, okay? And the building line changes if you have a cul-de-sac lot or stuff like that. So, the minimum lot width is going to differ depending on the setback of the house on the minimum building line. So, it was already in the zoning ordinance to begin with.
What about the 100, though, the reduction from 100 to 80 that?
Yeah, that, that was in there. So, so that was for, for lots that did not have public water, okay? So, and we changed it to just across the board, all lots and subdivisions regardless if you have public water or not public water. We clarified, instead of having with this or that, or this or that, or this or that, it just went across the board to 40,000 square foot.
Okay. Now, the part about the RA, we didn't rezone, I mean, nobody rezoned.
No, no, these subdivisions are all permitted by right, okay? So, so the subdivisions are all permitted by right, all right? When we changed the subdivision ordinance, the size and the scope of the subdivision required approval by the individual planning board as well as the Board of Commissioners. These are permitted by right. If they meet the minimum requirements, they still have to go through the TRC. Their issues are addressed from that. But there is no, per se, approval with this. There is no approval. This was just a procedural to so that the subdivision met all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance.
I guess I was looking for clarification on Chief Naylor's comments about what?
Intent.
Intent or the, you know, the RA not being developed, et cetera, versus what? What you just explained about being permitted by rights.
Yeah, it's permitted by right. Like I said, RA and R20, the overwhelming, 98% of the non-incorporated areas of Davie County have that zoning in it. So, we're going to be hard-pressed to find just R20 zoning. A lot of the R20 zonings are just the first 40 or 50-foot around the major roadways. So, the majority, we have dual zoning throughout the county. So, the overwhelming are either going to be RA or R20. The same zoning requirements are in R20 or is in RA.
But our planning board and, and us as commissioners, even though we've got questions about it, we didn't miss anything on that part.
No, no.
Okay.
And, and as I said before, and I, I do appreciate some of the concerns raised by Chief, Chief Naylor, water is not a part of the approval process. Utilities are not a part, other than septic. We don't, we don't require that. They have to be able, if they choose not to do public water as a part of the approval process, they have to show that they can meet the minimum separation distances for the wells, okay? But utilities are, if they choose to put public water, they choose to put public water. If they choose to do a community well, if they choose to do individual wells, that's just, they have to supply water somehow and it has to be approved water. We don't specifically mandate which specific type. They do a community well and do Aqua and drill a private well, if they choose to do wells and do all that, we don't. It's up to the developer to do that.
Well, and, and I get all that and I understand, but we're putting in a rural part of Davie County, 40 homes on 40 or 50 acres. And so, there has to be some consideration, not only of the neighbors, but also the issue of, of, of safety. And I, I get it. You guys are, you guys are concerned with safety, too. But we said, when we passed these, this ordinance that created these different levels, that we would have to tweak it a little bit along.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, I think Chief Naylor's brought up some great, great ideas that we need to address, so.
And quickly.
Yep.
And we didn't, we didn't reduce any side setbacks or anything on that. Or, okay, I just want to make sure.
I just want to clarify because that what you're saying, what I'm hearing is what you're saying. Because what I'm hearing is they use, the, the water requirement was there. The public water requirement was there.
No.
Because that's kind of what you said.
No, no.
And the, one of the sentences he said that no longer required the public water.
Public water, public.
Has never been required.
Never been there. No, 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 no.
We'll discuss it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Easter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Naylor.
Thank you, Todd.
Anybody else? Mr. Vogler?
Fine. And we'll have to, if, you're going to need to talk to Johnny Moore and decide on what you want in the way of a modification of any ordinance and we'll have to have the public hearing and go through all that.
We'll do that, yeah.
Mr. Vogler, I have a question if you don't mind. Anything that's changed forward of this, does this change that for this development?
No, no. Anything, anything up until the point in time where the ordinance has actually changed will go by the old ordinance. Thank you.
And I think that's where Ms. Finney's concerned about getting, getting these changes in there. All right, presentations. Mr. Barnett?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two. The first one will be from our friends at the Davie Respect Initiative and I'll turn it over to Ms. Julia to introduce her speaker tonight.
Well, this is beginning to feel like home. Thank you. We've been coming for about a year and a half now. Thank you to the Commissioners and to our county manager for, and Karen for having us back again this evening. Davie, I think, yeah, some of you have heard me say this before, but Davie Respect Initiative, or I'll shorten it to DRI, is a challenge for young people, 12 to 21, to come up with an inspiring idea that will enhance respect in Davie County. And you've heard us talk about, some of our projects have been creating flower arrangements for all the residents at Somerset Home Assisted Living. And how many have seen the piano downtown, the, okay, that Sean Lane created? That was the Davie Respect Initiative project and he got an old piano, refurbished it, painted it, and now it's available downtown for anyone to play and enjoy music. So, tonight, we have a little different program. We're going to introduce two new ambassadors and also one of our panelists, which is a very important part of our program. The two ladies that will be speaking tonight, Emma, who, she was ninth, in ninth grade when she won and now she's in 10th grade, and Casey, who's a senior this year. These two young ladies have a level of compassion that we don't see that often anymore and they have the ability to put themselves in another's shoes. In Emma's case, it's the shoes of a young foster child who's, who might be scared and lonely and she has a wonderful pillow project she's going to discuss. In Casey's case, it is, she's putting herself in the shoes of some children that are halfway across the world. And we're going to look forward to learning more about her project. But first, I'm going to invite Emma and her pillows to come up. And this is Emma.
Hello. So, my project is called The Pillow Project and so, this past April, I applied to the DRI and I won my project, my project won. And I first started sewing in eighth grade from a Family Consumer Science class and it was towards the end of the school year. So, that summer, I took up sewing and I loved it. And throughout the summer, I made a little over 200 pillows. And once I, like, made the pillows, I had to decide what to do with them and I decided to donate them to kids in foster care because I have a friend who is adopted and she would always say stories about how she was passed around from home to home and how she really had nothing of her own. And I thought it'd be a good idea to put my pillows and give them to foster kids for something of their own and throughout. And I donated them to the Blue Door Restore so far and I've started to make blankets and bags and these are some of my pillows.
Yeah. They're nice and soft.
Yeah.
And also, her brothers, she had given, like, her brothers so many pillows.
A lot of them, yeah. I would give them to my brothers.
Something else.
Yeah. And so, yeah.
And now, you are, say what you're doing now.
Oh, I'm making blankets and bags so far. Yeah.
She's set up her room.
Oh, yeah, I set up my room. I took out one of my, I have twin beds in my room and I took out one of the beds in my room because I have, like, big bolt, like, bolts of fabric and blanket materials from Joann's. So, and yeah, like, half my room is dedicated to it.
And she's making blankets for, for children that might be going through a court procedure or.
Yeah.
We partnered with a Guardian ad light, I'm in Davie Killen, that has requested the blankets and the pillows for some of her folks as well. So, we're dual, not only for the Blue Door, but also for the Guardian ad light.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Emma.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
And they're really soft and cozy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Okay, and now we can hear from Ms. Casey about her Children of Vietnam project.
Yes, so, good evening, Board. My name is Casey Cow and I'm a senior at Davie County High School and my project is called Comfy Learners. Comfy Learners is a project I worked on over the summer and our goal was to collect 50 pounds' worth of donated clothes and school supplies for children in Vietnam with low socioeconomic status, especially in rural areas. Along with collection, I made, I, along with other student volunteers, made over 25 personalized note cards translated into Vietnamese, proofread with the help of my mom, to gift these children and encourage them on their educational journey. This project ended up being a success. The box is currently in Vietnam as we speak and its contents are being distributed. And my project ended up getting an article written about it in the Davie Enterprise, which was so super awesome. Two of the main contributors to this project coming to fruition were the residents of Davie and the Davie Respect Initiative. Davie Respect Initiative is truly a special program and one of its kind where it actively encourages the younger generation to do good, like the butterfly effect where the one tiny good thing can bloom into another. The good, this good thing ended up being shared with others overseas from my project, Comfy Learners. And from there, maybe another student will look at my project and be inspired in my. And from there, maybe another student will look at my project and be inspired in Mocksville. So with all that being said, I find this cycle beautiful and worth celebrating in our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
So we can see how both of these ladies took a passion and turned it into something beautiful that's serving the community and beyond. So another very important aspect besides our creative, wonderful ambassadors is our panel. And our panel is made up of all volunteers. We have three adults and three ambassadors that are served on the panel. Tonight, I'm going to introduce you to one of the panel members, Charles Willard. And Charles and his wife have lived in Davie County since two thousand and four. He was a graphics coordinator for the balloon works in Iredale County and is even a balloon pilot. From there, he went for twenty-four years to, in, worked in the firefighting, uh, equipment, right? Firefighting equipment, um, business. And that took him all across the United States, Canada, even Europe and Africa. So Charles is one of those unique combinations of head and heart. And without further ado, I'm gonna introduce our friend and panelist, Charles Willard.
Thank you, Julia. And thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to share with you tonight. Um, I don't know if you're like me, but when you hear about these projects these ladies do, you can do nothing but smile because it makes you feel so good to see what kinds of activities are taking place in our community. Since two thousand and eighteen, the Davie Respect Initiative has been encouraging middle school and high school students to respect others through projects. And I want to focus a few minutes on what happens in our process of doing presentations and interviews with these students. Once the student submits their application, the panel members individually score each project using five criteria. Implementation, effectiveness, feasibility, originality, and substance. These scores allow the panel to rank the project compared to others submitted for that quarter. The interview starts out looking pretty typical, like a school presentation would. Here's my idea. This is what I plan to accomplish. These are the people that I hope to help, or the situation that I hope to make better. Students can use handouts, PowerPoints, or other media types to present their project to the panel. Once they're finished with their presentation, the student thinks the interview's over and they start looking at the door and saying, glad that's over with. But they're not finished. This is where it gets interesting. The panel has been patiently waiting to ask questions or raise concerns or brainstorm ideas to help the students have the very best chance of success. Students then, from my perspective, are thinking, what's going on? Typically, these interactions result in the panel getting to know the student better. Students becoming more relaxed and realizing that the panel really wants to help them. These interactions usually provide a greater potential for the project to succeed. In short, the panel is trying to help the student identify potential weak or vulnerable parts of their plan and suggesting solutions or options that will help them have a better chance at success. Tonight, I want to point out Casey for a moment as an example of this process. Casey has actually won the Davie Respect Initiative Award twice, once back in late two thousand and twenty-four, and again, she submitted in early two thousand and twenty-five. Casey's second project, as she reviewed with you, was gathering these supplies for young people in Vietnam. The panel initially kind of pushed back against Casey's idea because of the very high prices that it requires to ship things to Vietnam. And so we had discussions about, wouldn't it be better for you to just, uh, raise the funds and purchase the items in Vietnam and distribute them there? And so that led to us having those kinds of conversations. In this particular case, Casey decided to go forward and, and really just not be deterred in any way and make the project happen, and she did that. But she also was willing to listen to, uh, our idea of connecting her with a nonprofit, uh, whose president is in Winston-Salem, a nonprofit called Children of Vietnam, and she was willing to meet with them. She's now had the opportunity to meet with the president several times, to meet all the board members of that nonprofit, to work with them on some of their projects. And I truly believe that her future holds continuing to help others in her life. In closing, I want to be a witness to you that the hearts of these kids are self-sacrificing, generous, and giving. These are kids who truly want the best for others and they're willing to work to accomplish their goals. Some of these students even use the thousand dollar award directly for their project instead of for their own personal benefit. They don't have to do that, they choose to do that. And I, I just encourage you to think about that in the world that we live in today. Davie County should be proud of the kids who apply and are recognized in this program. I'm proud of them and I hope that you are as well. I'm biased, but I think that Davie County is blessed to have this program that benefit, benefits both the students and the community. Thank you.
Karen, are we photoing?
Do you need a photo? Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so much for this continued opportunity to share. Thank you. Always. Thank you.
You good?
Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, our second presentation tonight, I'm gonna let Carrie Miller with Senior Services, uh, lead us into a celebration that's probably long overdue for our Silver Spirits.
Good evening. I would like to thank the county commissioners and the county manager for having us tonight. My name is Carrie Miller. As I said, I am the senior games coordinator here in Davie County. So I'd want to tell a little story first. My introduction to three-on-three senior basketball was in May of two thousand and twenty-three. I had absolutely no idea what I was doing, so I thought I would run the score clock, take pictures, keep the scorebook all at the same time while Mike Garner refereed the game. Little did I know how complicated that would be, especially after Coach Vanessa Carter explained to me in approximately thirty seconds how to keep a scorebook. But I did it right, I did it right. From then on, I knew having a tournament would be at least a three-person job. The Davie County Silver Spirits have been a part of the Davie County Senior Games Program for thirty years. They have crushed records, set examples, and won gold at National Senior Games and the Huntsman World Games in Utah. They set the example for each and every person to age with purpose. We honor their legacy with a retirement reception on Thursday, October twenty-third, that featured the Laurel Reeth Award, which is the highest honor in North Carolina sports, along with awards from the town of Mocksville, and then the unveiling of their retired jersey that will hang in the Brock Gym Building. Tonight, we are here to applaud them for representing Davie County and to share their story to inspire others. So now let's take a look at their feature on the North Carolina Tar Heel Traveler that aired on WRL on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
The North Carolina Senior Games is underway this week in Raleigh. It's a big week and it features athletes competing from across the state.
Tonight, our Tar Heel Traveler meets a basketball team that's racked up a slew of victories. Scott Mason is in David County with the silver-haired Silver Spirits.
Life is like a basketball, full of bounce at first, but over time, more of a dribble, unless, that is, there's a rebound.
Let's give it to her. There she goes, there she goes. Yeah.
Yeah, they really are in their eighties.
Do you feel pretty good?
I feel pretty good, except for my bad leg I got right now.
Bad legs and knees and aches and pains, but wishes and championships.
Won the national championship in two thousand and twenty-three.
But that was just a drop in the bucket.
How many tournaments have you all won?
Oh, mercy.
The Silver Spirits from Mocksville, Davie County.
Go, go, gotta move.
The Silver Spirits have moved and picked and rolled for thirty years.
Focus on the front of the goal.
Players that were once high school standouts.
My team won the county championship.
That's her in nineteen fifty-four.
I had an old rusty pocket knife.
I was five-eight, but you know, as you age, you compact.
Alice, hello, number twelve. She went on to become a school secretary.
I gotta get up and go.
Charlotte would go to the tobacco market. Tobacco was her profession.
But anyway, I was doing a hook shot.
Sue, team captain and high school trophy winner.
And you've kept that all these years.
Oh, yeah. It's got a dent on it right there where one of my babies knocked it on the floor.
The Silver Spirits officially formed in nineteen ninety-six.
And thereafter, they won the gold in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand.
At ages fifty, sixty, seventy.
Two thousand and one, two thousand and two.
And age eighty and above.
From two thousand and five until two thousand and twenty-three, they won the gold every year in their age bracket.
But with victories also came laws. The loss of husbands and even teammates.
Oh, the team has meant a lot to me.
And not just the winning.
It gave me teammates, it gave me friends, it gave me travel.
Okay, around the world.
The Silver Spirits only recently retired.
Oh, we still come and shoot.
Oh, almost.
But no longer compete.
And the highlight, I guess, is going out to lunch together.
I tried to tell myself I'm not that old.
But age has a way of winning. How do you compete against getting older?
Just out-practice them and out-play them.
I guess that's just part of life, though.
That's right. There you go, Charlotte, good job.
Good job, Silver Spirits. It's been quite a run.
Keeps us out of trouble.
They have a goal, they have a dream, and they want to fulfill that dream.
I just love that story. So the team retired just this year. They agreed it was time, after all, the oldest member is nearing ninety, and yet they continue to practice each week and enjoy the camaraderie.
All right, we are, we have, uh, in our agenda, we passed a resolution, and we want to present this, the resolution, to you all. So commissioners, if you'll come down front, we will, we will do that. And we have individuals, individual resolutions for each of you. But Karen, tell us how we want to do this here. Come on up here and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just let you guys hold this and we'll get in the back. If y'all want to hold that together, there you go.
I don't know, it's, I'm short.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Let me do one with this phone. Ready, one, two, three.
You good? All right. Okay.
We're trying for so long.
Richard, and here we go. Everybody.
Thank you all. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. 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 All right. County managers' report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you all have a copy of my monthly report sitting at your desk. Two quick things. I just want to say that we had a very successful Halloween event this past Friday in talking with the Sheriff's Department. They did not have any major incidences or issues. And overall, I think we had a pretty overall Davie County good day on Halloween. And as we sit here on November 3rd, next week will be Veterans Day. But in celebration of our veterans, Senior Services is having their annual Veterans Day event on November the 6th at 1:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. So we invite all of our veterans. There is a process to register, but if you haven't registered, please come out anyway, and we will make sure that we show our honor and respect for those who have served our great country. And that's all I have.
Okay. I know you all just got this at your desk tonight. If you have any questions, get with Brian on that as we, as we look over the report. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Finney? Was that you? Richard seconds. Any discussion?
I do want to point out something. I do just want to call attention to our resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. As Brian just mentioned, Veterans Day is next week, and we certainly want to call, thank them for their service. And also, the Operation Green Light calls attention to some of the issues that military personnel bring back home with them and brings attention to that and hopefully that they will seek the assistance that they need. So we're just really proud to include that in our agenda.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Old Business Zoning Map Amendment. Mr. Easter?
I know you guys miss me, so I come back up here again. So just bring back to you. So just a general overview of what we had. I don't know how much information that we have here, but the applicant, Brian Killian, has applied to rezone approximately .92 acres from residential 12, R12, to highway business conditional. Property is located on US Highway 601 North and is further described as Davie County text parcel G3050A00002. As you can see, it's located up 601 North, just north of Main Church Road. The zoning around it, there's highway business across the road, highway business directly beside of it. There's a location look at it. The conditions that the applicant has requested is just specifically for the use as retail. It's currently operating the business across the road and wants to use it as a sales lot. It was approved by the planning board. And back to address any questions or concerns that you guys have about this going forward.
Just wanted to mention real quick, if you had any questions, the applicant was not present last meeting, but they're here tonight.
Any questions? I do have a question if the applicant's here. My only concern about this is safety crossing 601. So, Mr. Killian, how many, how often would you need to move sheds across 601?
And that's a great question. That's, that's our concern, too. We wouldn't be. So the sheds would go straight to that lot. The only time that they would leave is if we sell a shed and our trucks come in and get it and then deliver it to our customers. So we're not hauling them back and forth, just leaving them there for an overflow.
So you're not building them across the street? Because that was the impression we were given before you were building them on one side of the street and going to sell them on the other side.
Well, we're building our sheds on one side of the street that we sell on our lot. That's all metal sheds that we build on our side. This side of the lot are wood sheds. So we want them shipped into that lot, and we'll sell them off of that lot, and then we'll ship them to the customer.
Are you manufacturing those sheds?
We, we are not manufacturing the wood sheds on that side of the lot, no.
So these aren't, the, 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 the sales lot that you're requesting the rezoning for is for sheds that you don't manufacture?
That is correct.
Anything else?
Well, I'll just share with you the same thing that I shared before. Frankly, there's lots of other places in the county that you could put a business without going, being across the road from each other. But I think we're all a little confused and a little surprised now to learn that you're not manufacturing these because we, I believe we were originally told that the reason you wanted to expand was because you didn't have enough room to store what you were manufacturing. Is that not what everybody else was? Okay.
So we, we work, we sell for sheds direct. And sheds direct, they build wood sheds. So their sheds are shipped into our lot, and we sell for them. They're the manufacturers. We manufacture our own sheds that we sell off of our lot. So our sheds, we put on our lot. So we want to expand with sheds direct on the wood sheds that they have and expand across the road for them, across the south of that lot.
And where are they located?
They're manufactured out of Daniel, Missouri. Their co-company is located there.
Really, this is initially a new business. I mean, it's, it's like a different business. It's not an expansion. It's, well, I guess it is in a way, but it's, it's not exactly how it was presented to us last month, so, okay.
Other questions? Anything you want to say, Mr. Killian?
For one, it's been, it's been great being here. I mean, the testimonies and what you guys are doing is fantastic. We enjoy Moxville. We, we can appreciate the opportunity to come to the city and have an opportunity to build our business. We understand safety concerns about crossing the road. We understand that ourselves. We're not going back and forth across the road. We'll have signs up that direct people back to the office, but we're not walking across the road to visit customers. We're simply asking for a lot that we can take our sheds as an overflow lot to be able to expand our business.
So your metal sheds are on 2317?
Correct.
But again, it's not an overflow lot for your sheds. It's a, it's a, it's a sales lot for sheds direct.
For a different item.
Right?
That is, that is, that is correct.
Okay, all right, okay. You do sell the wood sheds now. You just sell them out of 2317. Okay, but you're expanding that side of the business, so to speak.
We are, we're expanding our metal side of the business and our wood side. That's correct.
Anything else? All right, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with that in mind, what they have just enlightened us with, I don't see this being the safety issue that I thought it was going to be to begin with, and I would make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion for Mr. Poindexter. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, Mr. Renner, seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, it passes three to two. All right, thank you. All right, any new business? All right, Richard, Commissioner's comments.
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I hope everybody that can vote tomorrow, that needs to vote, gets out and does it. And I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Richard. Brent?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I want to, of course, they've all gone now, but the Respect Initiative is such a great program, and we know volunteerism is down with the younger generations. So people like Emma and Casey and all the people involved need to spread the good news and get more people to be kind, compassionate, helpful. As we see so much negativity on social media and so much bullying and all that, it's nice to see that. And of course, the Silver Spirits, what else can I say? They're great for representing the county for all these years, so, with so much dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everyone coming out. Chief Naylor, appreciate your comments on the safety issues of our new ordinance. That's good input. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time with your family and friends. They were precious moments. See you next month, I hope.
Ms. Benada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for being here. I too want to thank Julia and all the DRI folks who came tonight and especially our Silver Spirits. I'm just so proud of them, you know? I wish I could play basketball, but I cannot. So I'm really excited they can. And, you know, I'm real, I'm, I'm really concerned about the safety issues that Chief Naylor has brought up. And, and Chief, I just want to thank you so much for always being an advocate, not only for your department, but for the whole entire county and for all the citizens of this county. And I hope that we will take better heed to safety and frankly, just common sense of putting this growth in place because we have to take care of all these people that we're allowing to move in here. And if we're not giving our responders the proper tools to serve these citizens, we are doing a great injustice to those people that are coming. I feel the same way about this zoning we just approved. I mean, we say we don't want to spread out into the county with businesses, but yet we just approved another one. So, I mean, at some point in time, we got to stand the ground and really pay attention to what we're doing. So, thank y'all.
All right. Thank each of you. Thank you all for being here. I will say this, 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 tonight will be my last meeting as chairman, and I want to thank everyone that has been so supportive to us and especially our staff that just does such a great job. And I really appreciate all you've done to make the last couple of years here. And I know Terry, prior to that, make, make things really happen in Davie County and, and make our meetings successful. So thank you. Now we're going to go into closed session, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1185 to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract, proposed contract for the acquisition of real estate, real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? All right, thank y'all. We'll be, we'll be back shortly. Do I have a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
Mr. Schoeff and Mr. Poindexter, all in favor? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, Mr. Poindexter, all in favor? We stand adjourned.
Thank you.